West Common County Board of Commissioners Higgins Lake, Lake Level Control Structure Special Meeting, October 23rd, 2024.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Milburn. Astor Green.
Here.
Here.
Censor.
Here. Approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Astor Green.
Yes.
Wolfson. Censor.
Yes.
Russo. Milburn.
Yes.
Public comment. Is there any public comment? Come up.
Craig Cotterman, Denton Township, Holton Lake. I apologize for bringing an issue that concerns Holton Lake to this, at this time, but I missed the meeting this morning. Since I believe their attorneys are going to hold me, hold me responsible for filing my petition wrong, I had to admit at this time. I'd like to respond to the motion of summary disposition, Doc at number 24-003609, the tribunal or lax jurisdiction. I attended the public hearing to review special assessments, cost rolls, et cetera, on May 23rd, 2024, in my protest packet. The notice stated that objections to the special assessment appearance and protest at the hearing is required. I was there. This was repeated several times to a crowded school or auditorium. Index cards were handed out. The audience was told that by entering your name and address, that you would, that they would consider this a protest. There was numerous card, card sign. If necessary be, if necessary, I'm sure you got a record of these index cards at the county. I handed my protest and it was clear, a party who appeared was, a party appearance was recorded, would be considered to have protest. Further, their assessment roles should be finalized inclusive, unless it appeal in a court within 15 days. This is what I did. This is what I was told to do. An attorney from Schultz Roads responded, chaired this meeting. I never heard him mention, never heard her mention which court I should file my protest. I never once heard. I had protested several special assessments in the past at the small claims division. And I thought this is where protests go for property owners protesting their special assessment. I guess, what Fahey and Associates are, are doing. They're holding me accountable for applying to the wrong court. I don't know how much, I don't know how much they're going to charge me. And I guess I'm upset. We don't have the money to fight these attorneys. I wouldn't dare fight, fight them to begin with. I thought I was protesting small claims division. At the tax tribunal.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yep, come up and state your name.
My name is Jim Sights. And I'd like to talk to you about the level control structure, the work that I've been doing. Information very quick. Okay, so. My name is Jim Sights. I'm a retired chemical engineer and I've been a Higgins Lake property owner for 38 years. I would like to briefly summarize the work that I have done regarding the operation of the level, level control structure that I've already sent to you folks, and you've seen the communications that I, that I have sent to you. I would also like to make a few comments about a few points that I believe are equally as important regarding the current situation. We can't control the weather, but we can control the amount of water leaving the control structure. The goal should be to try and keep the lake level as high as possible for as long as possible during the summer months before Mother Nature eventually takes over. Spicer did a good job explaining the operation of the control structure in their 2000 report. A summer, summary of this work is shown. Data point is summarized on, on the graph in this, in this, in this picture. The actual flow rates that are shown on the graph on the left side of the picture here are taken from a study that was done in 2013 by MSU. And this, this was summarized in a report that they, that they, that they adopted. The important point here is that the level control, control structure is operating per design. And it matches that which the Spicer folks actually projected. Okay, since then, the bottom of the, of the channel has, has experienced significant change. Actual flow rates measured out of, out of the lake are significantly, significantly different than they are, than they were at that point in time. The, the flow out of the, of the lake is considerably higher than it was during that particular time. It's about 75% higher than it was during that particular point in time. But the question is, what, what has happened since that point in time? And what has happened is that the, that the, that the channel depth has changed significantly. At that point there, since that point in time, the level has dropped, the, the channel depth has, has changed significantly. It's approximately one foot less now than it was during that point in time. And, and that's, that's an important point to, to realize. So. One can speculate what, what has happened during that time. But what, what has happened is that there's significantly more water that's flowing out of the structure now than there was during that, during that point in time. So, channel depths, the increase in channel depth was confirmed from the survey that was conducted by Prehn and Newhoff in 2023. If you look at this particular graph, the star on the graph shows what's the current flow rate is coming out of, of the lake. The other points on, that are on the graph show low rates measured by the Higgins Lake Property Owners Association. So. What this shows is that the, the actual flow rate is higher now than it was back in that, back in 2010.
We give five minutes and the bell just went off. I'm sorry.
You can make the rest of your public comment at the end.
Yeah, there's another section for public comment to finish. Thank you. Any other public comment? Come up.
Hello, my name is Brian Ferneyton, Young McEris Township President of business area for approximately 52 years. I think what the common goal of all this is, is to take care of Higgins Lake. Higgins Lake is the crown jewel of West Common County. Can't control the weather. We can't control many things, but what we can control is a process to get something done. Okay? Numerous times we watch these meetings, we see two weeks, two weeks, 45 days, two weeks, we've got to start acting. So in that case, we've got to start looking at maybe perhaps some groups of people get together to have a committee start doing some instructional feedback as to what needs to be done first, what the process really is. We also own businesses in the community and I'll tell you, this is not only affecting families, generations, but business. Have to start seeing some progress if we're going to keep our area productive. If we see production, I think you're going to see a lot of these other things that you're asking for come around. I think there's money out there to take care of these things without allegedly beating people for money to get these things fixed. But we have to approach certain associations for help, I hope, that make a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Come up.
Bob Edwards, well for Butis Lane. I've been, even as a child, I was at Westminster Camp enjoying the lake. So I have some general comments. Structural fisherman, fishing on the lake for a long time. Level of the lake is extremely important in other different areas. Just me again, I was the fishing director at the camp a long time. Teaching kids how to fish. We did structure and we fished, we'd captured minnows and all those kinds of things. I also owned the Cut River Restaurant for a number of years, right along the river, so I got a chance even working, see the water going by and the changes. I was even in the area when, and you'll laugh at this, but it wasn't uncommon to have citizens of the lake drive up to the dam and pile rocks, roll rocks up to lower or raise the level depending on individual groups that wanted to save their property from getting taken into the lake or not. Being a fisherman, a structured fisherman, I also went through something that we all probably remember, which is the swimmer's itch. And there were a lot of theories behind that. But mine is not, I'm not a doctor or anything, but I related the swimmer's itch to the level of water that was on it. We had a period of very low water. When you do, when the sun shines, the, the lake warms up tremendously around the edges. And when they do, we have vegetation and a very, very heavy influx of minnows that you start picturing and coming into it. Couldn't figure out how to do it other than throwing the ducks out and some things. And all of a sudden, one year, guess what? It kind of went away. Reason in my book, and I'm not a doctor, was that I noticed the, the lake level came up. Whole cycle of events went out. Ducks started not eating in the lake. Minnows were moving out into the deeper water, whatever the case was. But then as soon as the level of the lake came up, the swimmer's itch disappeared. Not totally, but enough where it wasn't a, you know, front page article. Problem that we had with the swimmer's itch was when it was here, it was very disastrous to the business people. I had a Cut River Restaurant, other things that I was doing and devastating, the number of people coming up from down below. They didn't want to come up, they didn't want to put their kids in the water. Even at Camp Westminster, they had to take the kids out, put them in a wash area to wash them off as they come out of the lake, so that they wouldn't suffer from swimmer's itch. So I've had some experience with a little bit of everything going on. I noticed here that when I, I now is winter in, in Florida, Ex Whol Lake. I have to deal with alligators, but that's not your problem. But when I came back, I noticed the lake was down quite a bit in the early summer. And when I went out to, my dock was put in and everything, the minnows were outrageously everywhere. I could put a minnow trap in and in, only 10 to 15 minutes, it's filled with minnows. Also, I observed an abnormal number of ducks and waterfowl in the lake. Right in front of my house, I sit in my lazy boy, now that I'm old, I could see a dozen ducks always in the same spot just to the side of my dock, diving for whatever but food they were there for. And so what I'm saying is a lot of the issues that went away are now coming back. And so I just want to make you aware of the fact, I don't even know whether University of Michigan or any of those people that are a lot smarter than me know what that's all about, or even agree with me. But the level of the water is not just let it up, let it down, do this. You've got lots of issues to deal with and somewhere you're going to have to sift through all that and come up with an idea where you keep that level at a certain level. Certainly don't want swimmer's itch. Don't want those kinds of problems again. But anyhow, I'm not a doctor, I don't have a degree in marine things, but I do fish and I fish a lot and I can tell you on the fishing, what's healthy and what's not, and where they're fishing, where the, the fish are, what they're doing.
Five minutes.
My point is to you is that it's, it's the length, it's very, very important what you come up with as far as the control of the water level. I don't think, I certainly don't, I hope we're not going to have citizens coming up with big bullies and walking them up against the
Thank you.
We're, we're far beyond that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Higgins Lake, review of the permit submitted to Eagle. All the commissioners have received a copy of the initial permit that was given to you a couple of weeks ago. On the back, you can see that the application date was in April. It clearly states within the permit, the project summary and the purpose and the use of the permit, which was adding additional height to the sheet pile on the north end of the structure, add additional height to floodgates, new and additional logs to the stop log bays, in addition, a field stone to the unconfined opening up to the top of the footing. The project, the project construction sequence, methods and equipment was also spelled out. You can see that there was a response from Eagle back on how the construction was to be done. And once the above was given, you can see that those corrections were approved. Project alternatives, we're also talked about. The, one of the comments that the delegated authority at the time stated, the do nothing approach is not prudent to West Common County. For numerous reasons, the approach is the least environmentally impactful since no heavy equipment is needed while accomplishing the task of retaining as much water as possible by limiting loss due to the wave action, since closing the uncontrolled 4.75 foot opening is not feasible. Again, Eagle responded and there was additional information supplied to them. There was also questions in the application about resource and activity type. Next was the inland lake project information that was supplied, stream project information, and then Lake, Great Lake Stream impacts. The shore protection project questions were answered there. Again, back and forth went on. And that is when I believe, or at the time, Shuckey Consulting came in and wanted to know what the commission wanted him to do. And we basically gave him the go ahead to revise part of the permit and resubmit it. Well, let's see, the scope of the project basically was lined out and face at the time, or Shuckey Consulting at the time had given everything that he, that was required of him. And at that point, Eagle, Aaron and Eagle had approved the portion enough to, to give it to DM Safety. Once it went into DM Safety, that is where the permit sat. And then you were just given additional information today from snapshots out of the portal. It basically stated. One was in process, then it was locked for review on 8/16. The reason, the submission has been locked for review by the agency processor. You'll be notified when the review is complete in any steps. The status was update on hold. Reason. Your submission review has been completed and it was determined that your application could not be considered administratively and or technically complete. Your application cannot be processed any further without additional and or corrected information. And that was dated back in August, August 22nd, 2024. At that time, Shuckey Consulting was no longer the delegated authority and there was no named delegated authority at that point. Therefore, no information was ever sent back.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah. There's always, we, it automatically defaults back to the commissioners who, and then also defaults back to the drain commissioner. That's who by statute defaults back to. What happened was, first of all, I want to let everybody know, I want to move forward on this and get this thing going forward. It was originally presented, this permit was denied. Not denied, it was, it was technically withdrawn on a technical aspect. Now, what I would like to do is, we all make mistakes, we all misspeak. I, if you're speaking and talking and making anything happen, you're going to make mistakes, you're going to make enemies, you're going to, stuff is going to happen. So we just all have to sit down and admit the ball got dropped. Now, let's move forward, reapply for these permits and get these temporary fixes done. Chase, Shemke, reported to us, he went out with engineers quite a while back in the summer, and there were five shots taken at the bottom of the spillway to where it should be leveled. In other words, at the stream bed or at an apron that is not there. One position was 9.84 inches below the stream bed. The other position, just as described by Mr. Sights here. The other position was 11.88 inches. The other position was 13.56 inches. The other position was 12 inches. The other position was 8.28 inches. Eagle came back to us, DNR came back, just that there's no erosion in the spillway. Even Mr. Russo said there was no erosion in the spillway. Mr. Wolfson said he can see erosion all over the place. That spillway is terribly, terribly eaten out in the bottom. We have to get the rocks back in that spillway to at least help until we get a permanent structure that is going to effectively manage the lake. So it doesn't matter what happened, it's happened. The permits have been withdrawn. We need to reapply for every single item on, that was applied for. And we need to do it with a licensed professional. We need to spend the money. We have the money. We can do it if we as commissioners have the will to do it. And that's going to be one of the subject matters we're going to be talking about here. But this has to be done. This has to be fixed. This lake right today, it is 10.68 inches below legal level. 4.68 inches below maximum winter drawdown. It isn't even supposed to start until November the 1st. Now, with the weather the way it's been, would we be below legal level? Sure we would, but we wouldn't be half as bad as we are right now. Holton Lake, I don't even know what that's at because of course we don't have the USGS sites yet, or data anymore, but we will shortly, I hope. So we need to do something. I know, I know we're all concerned with it, but ball got dropped. Let's just admit it. Ball got dropped. We need to make a correction, move forward. That's my comment.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The string bed is definitely low. Two years ago, January, I stood on that dam and I said that. It's obvious, I could see it. I mean, we all know what the problem is and that's why, that's one of the things, or the main thing in my book, what we needed to accomplish with a permit was be able to bring that string bed up. I think the biggest problem we're going to run into with this is I have never seen an elevation of the original string bed when that structure was done.
Chase shot it, Chase shot the original, the originals.
Where the string bed was, there was nothing on the plans I ever seen showing an elevation.
He headed it to the top of the footing, which should have been the string bed.
Should have been, but the elevation number's not there, so that's one hurdle there. But I still think that's what we need to apply for.
The top of the, yeah, the top of the footing is the bottom of the stream, is the bottom of the stream bed.
And with these numbers that this other gentleman just gave us, maybe we can incorporate them in the permit that, you know, he originally wanted 33 feet, now there's 58 feet going through.
Right, right, a whole load of rocks.
Proves it, you know, but anyway, that's just my comment.
Right, right, a whole load of rocks were removed by the, this commission back in 24. Those need to be reinstalled. And I don't know if Eagle, the DNR, I want to make this straight, make this very perfectly clear to everybody here. I don't think we're the enemy. I think it's Eagle. We have to go after Eagle and get on their case about them doing their job. They sit back in their offices, collect big salaries, they do nothing but send out rejection notices on everything because they think that's their job. We have to get on them. If it's, whatever it is to do, we have to, we have to get on Eagle and make things happen. We have to have the will to do it. We've got the money to do it. We have to have the will to do it.
Any other comment from any commissioner? On part A. Part B is scope of the project. Ultimately, what is our goal? What are we looking to do? From my understanding, the first part, Commissioner Wolfson is saying.
I think this, the other things were for wave action and stuff like that, and that might make a difference, but I think that is the one that's going to do the best for us at this point.
I think there were a number of things that were, that Chase had asked for in his permit. We have to, I think we need to separate those particular items out and apply for those as each specific permits. In other words, if there's five permits. In other words, if there's five different things that Chase requested, we need to file for five different permits. So when they, when they reject one, the other four don't go away, or they reject four, the other one doesn't go away. Uh, the, the, these people at Eagle are sneaky. I, I, I test them. I really do. I don't, I don't like how they operate. I don't, I don't like what they do. They're an alphabet soup agency, not, not responsible to anybody, not responsible to the, to the people of this state and this county. And we need, we need to forcibly go after them and have them respond in, in, in a manner that, that we can do something about it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Apparently Eagle wants engineering on everything. I can understand engineering needed on making a structural change that may affect performance of the dam like that. I just can't imagine why you need an engineer to tell you put six inch stones in the stream bed. So in that respect, as far as separate permits, that may be advantageous to do that one at least in separate.
I know where there's a stop block. Okay?
What's the measurement on it?
Uh, six foot by, six inch by six inch by six.
Can you double that? So we got ten inches?
Well, i- 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 it just sits on top of the footing.
Any comments, guys? Any thoughts?
But I'd like to hear from the rest of the board.
So would I.
I like what Eric said about.
Mm hmm. Well, we got to see first.
And, and who, who would we go after? Like Spicer? Have Spicer do it?
Well, we got to cover another source.
That's the next part of this.
That's the next part.
Yep.
Okay.
I can't believe I'm agreeing, but, but you're right.
Thank you.
I don't think anybody up here denies that we have to continue to do something and try to figure out the best way to move forward. But we've already, a lot of money has already been spent up to this point. And it's gotten us nowhere.
What, what, what money is that? This been spent?
The county alone this year has already spent forty four thousand dollars.
On what?
On Higgins Lake.
On what? On Higgins Lake?
Part of wages. Chase, the thing.
That's been for the special assessment district to develop this. Is that what you're talking about?
No.
Develop, to, to do what? To do what though?
Hi fi.
I can understand that. For the, for the, for the, for everybody who wants to know, hi fi is the gauge, new gauge measurements that were, are being put in the lake.
Yeah, most of it is Chase's wages and hi fi.
Okay.
It's applying for the permit.
We can take a lot of the material that he has already done and replicate it in the new permits. I'm, I'm hoping I'm, so that isn't wasted money, I'm hoping.
And very luckily, some private monies has gone into this project.
But I know that, I know that Higgins Lake Land Conservancy has pumped a lot of money into this as well.
Greatly appreciated because it's moved this long.
Mm hmm.
But when we're in a, when we're trying to balance a budget just to keep open, you know, I mean, money's tight.
Mm hmm.
He just moved forward with the SAD for Higgins Lake. So we have the money to move forward.
We can't wait for that. We cannot wait for that.
You don't have the money.
Yes, we do. This morning in our, Rebecca Reagan reported that we had six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the tax fund. Now, we as commissioners, and Jody has mentioned this before, we as commissioners can borrow that money from the tax fund to move forward with this. The situation with the SAD is going to be handled sooner or later. We're going to end up with the SAD on Higgins sooner or later, one way or the other. Okay, but we can't wait two years for this to go through the court system. And then say, oh, now we got the money to do something. We have to start on it right away. We need, we can borrow money from the tax fund, just like we borrow money from it all the time with everything else. Okay? Move forward.
To get re, reimbursed.
What's that?
What assures us that we're going to get reimbursed?
You guys already, Dave, you know that, you've already said you're going to get reimbursed on everything on Holton Lake and Higgins Lake and everything from the SADs.
Everything's been going through. Everything went through, you know, we're closed.
Like, here's the problem with the SAD, Dave, and maybe you don't understand. An SAD is going to be set up. The problem is the attorneys, Fahey and Schultz improperly implemented it. They didn't come up with a project.
So if the judge says it's improper, no good.
Start over.
And who's going to pay for that?
Dave, it's already, most of it's already been done. Okay, a- and who's going to pay for it? The people in the SAD are going to pay for it. That's who pays for it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, it looks to me like at this point, we're trying to find funding sources to hire an engineer to apply for permit, put stones back in the stream bed. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Rex, I didn't hear you.
At this point in today, we're exploring for funding sources to hire an engineer to apply for the permit to put stones back in.
Mm hmm.
And possibly there's private enterprises out there to help fund this too. We haven't explored that yet.
And that's all you're talking is putting stone in?
It.
Rocks.
That, well, there's other things we could do, but that seems to me to be the, the most impact on getting the lake level up for people. You know what I mean?
In a process that might be able to be done rather.
Quickly.
Quickly.
And minimum amount of.
We could all agree as a commission to go out and do it. And then you know what would happen? Okay, maybe Eagle would sue us, maybe they wouldn't. Okay, maybe they would, maybe they wouldn't. We don't know. We could just go do it. We're, we're, there's actually a lawsuit going on right now in Lansing right now that has been filed by Steve Ricketson, myself, that i- is saying that uh, it's against the, the constitution of Michigan that has Eagle have anything to do, has anything to do with the dams. It's supposed to be the counties that are in charge of the dams. And that's, then that's going to take a while to go through. But that's really the responsibility is for us as commissioners to do that. So that would be certainly something that we could consider also.
Tax payment fund does provide us a funding stream. Question is, how much would we spend? That's, that's the kicker. It provides us a funding stream. How much do we spend?
I don't think it would certainly be that much for Spicer Engineering or any engineering group to submit permits when all of the work has already been done by Chase. They could probably take.
How much you quantify is, is, is much. Ambiguous. But if we come up with.
Ten grand, twenty grand, thirty grand? I don't know. Certainly shouldn't be that much. For permits, I mean Chase, Chase did it pretty quick.
It's an opportunity.
Yeah.
To you.
Andy, is Bob Fry on?
Yes.
Can he hear me? Okay.
Unmute it.
He wanted to speak during this section.
There you go. Can you hear me, Darlene?
Yes.
Well, as far as um, funding this, this is kind of like deja vu for.
Got to crank it up.
Let me turn on my sound.
Sure. Okay.
Talk loud, Bob.
Last year at this time, I don't think that's me.
Sound great.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, um, there was an uh, plan to do a survey of the dam so we could make this application for a dam modification. And the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy paid Prine and Newhoff five thousand eight hundred dollars just to get the ball rolling. So by last summer, we'd have some kind of a permit to modify the dam, which would include um, filling in that eroded section of the spillway with rocks. And it would include uh, additional sheet piling uh, extensions above the uh, legal level. And that permit was made by Chase and you all heard and discussed the rejection of that permit. Last week, I was in touch with Eric Seegun uh, of Prine and Newhoff and explained to him the situation that the major, one of the major uh, reasons that permit was denied is because their excuse was that it didn't have a professional registered civil engineer's signature on the application. Uh, I talked to uh, Chase Shepki who made the permit. He has forwarded all of the application and the follow-up questions and answers to Eric. Eric Seegun at Prine and Newhoff in Cadillac has that information. And I just got word this morning that he will give us a cost estimate of completing and reapplying for that same permit by the end of next week. And as far as funding um, that review and reapplication, I have a letter I shared with Darlene on July seventeenth uh, offering uh, up to three thousand dollars from the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy uh, to uh, help expedite that application for that permit. We haven't spent any of that money yet, and we still have it. And I'm sure the um, the community of Higgins Lake is not afraid to um, contribute more if we need it. So I think we have to keep going forward and I think there is a way forward. And the fastest way to do it is to go with the people that did the original survey last December, have all the information and have the best um, the best handle on it right now. If, if you want to go and put it out for bids and all that sort of thing, that's going to take months. Anyway, I'm willing to ask, answer any questions the board, anybody might have.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, Bob, you say they're going to have a cost estimate within about a week?
That's right. Proposal. He's going to give us a proposal within a week.
And he'll share that with us at that time?
Absolutely.
I think that's a way to move forward. I, I appreciate all the work you've done, Bob.
I appreciate all the, the contributions from our Higgins Lake community to make it happen.
Thanks, Bob. Did he give you any kind of an idea? Are we looking at ten thousand, five thousand, any, any ballpark at all or not?
No, no ballpark.
Okay.
But you know, Eric, most of the stuff's been already completed by Chase Shepki. I think this would be more of a review by them to justify a signature on it.
That's what I would think.
I'd like to see this board have another meeting right after he gets us that information.
Yeah, we have to hopefully.
Eighteen.
Yeah, eighteen.
Okay. But once we get it, I will let everybody know.
Thank you very much.
We have that information. And I'll send it out to you guys. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that's for the, temporarily, just to get going. What are we looking at for long term? After the SAD gets established?
Hopefully, long term, what I would like to see is us to be able to find a proper delegated authority besides board commissioners doing it, where we all lack a lot of knowledge that's needed in this area, as far as I'm concerned.
Right immediately. There's, we don't have to wait for that to be done. Shouldn't we be looking now?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can I address Eric?
Yes.
Are you?
Are you asking if the SAD was settled? What would our next thing, what would we think we move from there?
Yes.
A new structure.
I think we need an engineering firm to look at the structure. My thought is they'll probably come up with the same consensus that the past delegated authority and I have, that we probably need a new structure. In that design, we have to come up with some way to be able to regulate how much water leaves that lake.
Full agreement. I was going to say the same thing.
Our battle will probably be with Eagle on some of that. Maybe not. We don't know. But it's going to take engineers to design a new structure. It's very possible we're losing water more than just because the stream bed's dropped a foot, but also underneath the structure.
That's what I understand from Chase. That's, that's what's so alarming. He said just in, through the spillway, we're losing twice the amount of water that the dam was designed.
But I'm just a commenter standing on the dam looking at it.
Right. But that's what Chase told.
It takes an engineer to, to determine this stuff for certain. But in my gut feeling is that's probably where we're going to wind up.
Well, hopefully that won't be five years from now. I think we need to get some kind of.
Sooner we can move things along, the better.
Oh, we say that.
You know. Anytime there's a lawsuit or some roadblock put in our way, it just puts us back from getting this accomplished for the people that live on Higgins Lake and use Higgins Lake.
Right.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I don't, go ahead, Dave. I don't look at Eagle as a confrontationally, like you, like you do. I look at it as a, as a partner in trying to achieve a success for the, the people who live in Higgins Lake and Roscommon County. I mean, I, I look at Eagle as an opportunity to work with them, not, not against them. I think I look at them as a, I want to have a cooperative spirit. Work with Eagle.
Madam Chair, may I speak? If Eagle was truly that way, okay, they would have helped us through this process and not, and, and not had us withdraw our, they would have said, they would have said, come on in, let's work on it and work on it together, instead of sending emails back and forth saying, you got to do this and you got to do that. They would have came up to us and said, hey, let's sit down and be partners in this and work it out so we can get the the levels back to where they should be. Well, there, there you go. That's my, that's my answer. They're not partners with us. They're, they're fighting us all the time.
We need to come with some commonality for, to benefit the people of Higgins Lake.
Yes.
That's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Our ships are built over time.
Takes time. You trust.
And you start poking people in the eye and kicking them. It doesn't make good relations. I mean, you know, they're not happy to share their sandwich with you. So we should proceed with caution.
How's that been working for us?
Too much mustard on the sandwich.
We're at timeline.
Once we find out in a week or two, then we can take care of that.
Yep. So like I said, once we get the information from Mr. Fry, I will immediately send that out to everyone. And then depending upon if it's close to our next meeting or if we have to call a special meeting, we'll figure out what to do and then that's to move.
Yeah, I appreciate you all putting up with what I've been talking about, so.
It probably will be, if it's going to be the end of next week.
Be January first.
I would surprise.
And, and Madam Chair, I would recommend a special meeting. We want to focus just on.
A day or two of our late meeting.
You can always put it to at the end
Yeah.
of that same day.
Focus just on this, though.
Yep. So we can just.
Converge with other, other issues.
And I just want to say, I was trying to say a second ago, I really appreciate everybody putting up with what I've been talking about, or not necessarily putting up, but with listening to me and understanding. It's taken me some long time to get you. This process started back in two thousand twelve. And in two thousand nineteen, we, we got a stick in our eye. Okay, by, by the commission, the current commission at that time, passing a resolution that created a lot of havoc. And that's when the lawsuit started. And then by then, by the past commission in the last meeting of the last day of the, of their term, putting all of these special SADs on all three lakes at the same time has created havoc in this community when they should have done them one at a time. So I'm hoping we can move forward and make this happen. And I really appreciate you, you know, listening to what I have to say.
But here you go.
You and I've had conversation the last two days. Thank you for the better person showing up today.
Any other comments?
And I, I want to say I value the public comments. I hope there's some more after them, when public comment does come up, because those public comments help me make a better decision.
I would agree. I would agree. Motions and resolutions? There are none, so we are back to public comment. Okay.
One point I was trying to make in my talk was I believe that the level control, control structure is operating exactly as you would expect with the current dimensions that, that we're at, with the increased channel depth and uh, so on and so forth. I don't think that there's any additional things happening such as seepage or things like that that are, that are causing the flow rate to be increased going down the Cut River. One thing that I would like to make sure that we do though, is understand what the minimum requirement is from the state going down the Cut River. Okay. So I believe that until you know what that minimum is, and I don't see why the state and why you shouldn't be able to, to determine that from the state, why you shouldn't get that number from them. I think that you're gonna be wasting a lot of time and a lot of money if you start going through trying to analyze, getting engineers involved, designing new level con- con- control structures until you know what that number is. The worst thing you can do is get engineering firms in place, have them go through a design, have them go through, try to go through the permitting process and say, no, we, you're not gonna do it 'cause this is the minimum that needs to be going down that, down that river. Until you know that number, you're gonna, you're spinning your wheels. You're gonna waste a lot of money. And you need to get and, and develop a good working relationship with the state and develop a partnership with them to be able to work together, determine what that number is. There's no way that you can continue from an adversarial position. So it's very easy for the state, and if they have a requirement that a professional engineer needs to sign a permit, and that's not done, they're not gonna, you know, that's pretty obvious. They're not gonna, they're not gonna, they're not gonna let you go forward until, until you know and, 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 and that, that kinda stuff is, is in place. And if you have a good working relationship with the state, you should be able to get that stuff sorted out. I mean, there's no way, you, you can't, you can't have an adversarial position with the state 'cause they hold the hammer. They're gonna say no, and this is why, and that's the law. So you need, you need to, you need to know that number. Until you know that number, it's, you're wasting your time and you're wasting your money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Minute?
Put together my thoughts. At Houghton Lake, we do have a special assessment district. We had a hearing and I did protest my special assessment at the Michigan Small Claims Division. And Fahyans, Fahyian Associates are now uh, asking for, for relief after I filed. I'm not sure how much I'm gonna be charged. Every time I protest from here on out, uh, your attorney's gonna ask for relief. It can't go against a large legal firm like that. I thought the Tax Tribune rules, Small Claims Division was meant for homeowners like myself. We could protest, we could state our piece. Through the whole process that the, you were at the high school, they never once said that I had to protest at Circuit Court. I couldn't, with, with my knowledge of the law, I wouldn't protest at Circuit Court. I don't have the background. Again, uh, we do have our special assessment district. Uh, can anyone here tell me what the lake level is at Houghton Lake?
Not today.
I was here months before, several times, saying that, what is Hi-Fi or why? Is it Hi-Fi you call it? It'll never replace the USGS service. We've had, we got two Hi-Fi stations, one works and one doesn't. They're not calibrated. I went there a little while ago. I don't, I don't know how to extrapolate the lake level from that information. I just don't know what you people are trying to do. I really don't. Thank you.
Uh, I'm just gonna be very brief. I think a lot of people are very upset and um, I don't know that the tenor, Brent Stanton, I, I don't know the tenor of this meeting was incredibly impressive. Um, jokes about ham sandwiches or whatever. Um, this has gotten out of control. And I think people want action. And it's like you guys have a meeting to talk about another meeting and then another meeting and I think people are sick of it. Um, I agree, you guys aren't the enemy. Uh, but you are our representatives. And the time is now to start doing something about it for the people that you represent. I don't wanna hear any more jokes and nonsense like it's time for action. And it's a lot more than, than just how high the lake is. Um, there's a ton that goes into it. There's the economy here that you wanna talk about money, forty thousand dollars, three thousand dollars? I don't think you'll make that back in tax revenue. What happens when home values go down? Like, I just, it's time to start doing something. And I get it, everyone wants to be friends. I'm not up here enjoying the, the fact that I gotta sound upset. Um, but I think push comes to shove, we gotta do something here. And if we gotta jab the state, you jab the state. But constant inaction and whatever it is that's going on, uh, it ain't working. And it's time to start doing something about it.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
My name is Greg Seemack and I'm resident of Girish Township. And I thank you for allowing me to speak to the board. I wanna talk about what many people perceive as how the level of Higgins Lake has been improperly addressed. And I wanna talk about the fact that the gist of my comments actually are in agreement with Commissioner Wolfson, where he says that partnerships are built over time. The issue is not what the status of a special assessment district is. The issue is not who the current delegated authority is. The issue is when will the county decide to take action to come into compliance with the court ordered legal lake level? In two thousand seven, the Higgins Lake Dam was replaced and the level of the lake has rarely been in compliance since then. The county knew of this problem, which is why they commissioned the Spicer Group in two thousand ten to study the dam. And one of the questions they wanted answered was how can the dam be modified to better control the outflow of water from Higgins Lake? The answer was to install a restrictor plate that could be used to better control the flow. The county paid thirty-five thousand dollars for this report and then the county ignored its recommendation. Over the next decade, many people questioned the control actions at the dam, but all were told to go away. That would, that there was nothing to see. This began a period of misleading responses about the Higgins Lake Dam that still exists today. The issue is still the same. When will the county decide to take action to come into compliance with the court ordered legal lake level? A new chapter of misleading information began when the county board decided to create a special assessment district and shift the cost of operating county dams to groups of residents. During that SAD was being considered for the Houghton Lake Dam in November of two thousand twenty-two, Herb Weatherly was asked by the Higgins Lake Political Action Committee to make inquiry to the county about whether a SAD was being considered at Higgins Lake. He was told it was not. In December of two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Commissioners passed a resolution authorizing the formation of a special assessment district for Higgins Lake. This resolution was passed in the last meeting where that particular board would meet together in a meeting four days before Christmas, when very few of the public were in attendance. And when it came time to discuss the proposed resolution, there were no questions, none. The resolution passed unanimously. Apparently, everyone knew everything they needed to know about how these dam SADS were going to be rolled out. The level of Higgins Lake continues to be managed illegally. The public sees that no one in position to do anything about it is doing so. This became even more absurd when someone actually tried to do something because the level of Higgins Lake was in non-compliance with the law and the county prosecuted him for it. And let's not forget this statement. It was announced at a county board meeting that the person who alerted the county to a dam modification was said to be an anonymous female. That anonymous female turned out to be former Commissioner Ken Melvin. Now the county is employing an attorney, in my opinion, who has already made false statements to the county board and to the public. And her misleading statements have been rewarded as she was recently rehired to represent the SAD at Houghton Lake. She has implied that she had spoken to both county supervisors in Lyon and Girish Township and that they were on board with the Higgins Lake Dam SAD. This was not true. It's a very significant misstatement. She said that no dam repair can be done without numerous extensive lake studies, some requiring legal management in order to obtain a permit. This is not true. She said in her presentation to the board on March twenty-second of two thousand twenty-three that she guaranteed that you could not get a permit to repair the dam at Houghton Lake without changing the lake level in the Circuit Court. She emphatically guaranteed this. And this was not true. She implied that the survey she wanted to have sent to residents in the Higgins Lake area would gather their input. This was a misstatement as the survey was nothing more than a tool to update database information. There was not even an option for input. This was not a survey by definition, when, and it wouldn't, it would assuredly provide minimum response and be of great expense gaining no relevant knowledge. No less than former Circuit Court Judge Michael Baumgartner stated to this board previously that you have been misled. These misleading statements are not confidence inspiring to the general public. Now the Higgins Lake community is being told that we should ignore the past and look forward again. We would welcome looking forward, but we wanna see some evidence that the county intends to comply with the court ordered legal level. The current county board of commissioners was installed approximately twenty-two months ago. Since that time, there has not been one action implemented to restrict the amount of water flowing out of Higgins Lake at the dam. What has taken place is that residents are being told why nothing has yet taken place. And today, the level of Higgins Lake is approximately ten and a half inches below the court ordered legal level. I would like to suggest that one county commissioner have the responsibility and not the whole county board. This statement was made in answer to why nothing was currently correctly done to get the permitting process to modify the dam. We have no delegated authority. And that was done at the last meeting when previously it had been announced that the whole board would be the delegated authority. I suggest that one commissioner needs to be responsible. All this said, the Higgins Lake community stands ready to discuss and consider any options that the county board wishes to discuss and be a party to any solutions. We ask only that those discussions are sought by the county and that they take place. And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to go over the time a little bit.
Any other public comment?
My name's Mike Purkey. I live in Sunrise Heights Association. We have eighty-seven lots in our association and all lots are deeded to have lake access. And I'm in charge, I'm on the board there. I also am in charge of the docks and assigning all the spots for everybody. Last year, I've had more comments about, Mike, I need to move out farther. The water's so shallow. We're out of spots. I can't go out any further. We're gonna have to spend thousands of dollars uh, new docks to go out further and further. And and we even much rather spend our money to either water level raised to the proper level than spend thousands and thousands of dollars to get our docks further and further out. We are, we are located just north of uh, Eric Township Marina. We have a large association and, and everybody there is like, Mike, what are we gonna do? I guess, I can ship a thousand dollars, get more docks. So that's where we're at. I know a lot of people around the lake uh, feel the same way. So please, let's get together and whatever it takes, let's get this done so I don't hear from all my members about the shallow water. So we should cheer up on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other public comment? Nothing on Zoom? With that said, this meeting will be adjourned.